The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call the special public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order, moving to our first item of business, closed session. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM.
The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public, but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item, our colors tonight, presented by the UMBLE High School Army JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I do not think they are here. Where are they?
There was no school today.
Okay, that's right. There was no school today. Lucky them, right? Okay. I would ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated.
Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Soon this fall semester, our eighth graders will be considering whether they would like to apply to Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School. Tonight's inspiring moment introduces families to Sconzo Early College High School.
Hi, welcome to Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School. My name is Brandon Bryant, and I'm going to show you around and give you a good idea of why going to Sconzo is such a great opportunity. Just so you know, we were formerly known as Quests. This year, we're honored to change our name to Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School in honor of our former superintendent, who was a champion for our school. The first thing I noticed when I came back was our new building. It is awesome. Number one, it's beautiful. And of course, we have all the typical classrooms and labs, but we also have these flexible and innovative spaces that we can use for collaborative projects, homework and reading, and just hanging out. It feels like a college year. We really appreciate our new home. Unlike a typical high school, Sconzo Early College High School is focused on, well, college. We have five main areas of focus: academics, family, Avid, service, and clubs. Leanna Gonzalez is going to tell you more about the academics here at Sconzo.
Academically, this is a rigorous program that allows us to get our college associate's degree while we're in high school. So we basically get two years of college done and graduate with a high school diploma. How great is that? We actually begin taking dual-credit courses our second semester freshman year. It's challenging, no doubt, but the teachers here are great at providing support through learning labs, tutorials, and family.
Of course, Sconzo is more than just a building, and it's more than earning an associate's degree in high school. It's also about learning to become successful. Our principal is going to tell you more about that.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ms. Scott, the principal of Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School, and you are absolutely right, Brandon. We have lots of supports in place to ensure that you are successful. Our support begins the summer before your ninth-grade school year in Bridge Camp. It's a great opportunity for students to learn the layout of our campus, to meet their teachers, to be introduced to their family members, and to get a great understanding of how they can be successful at an early college high school. We also have two counselors that are here to support you throughout your journey. They will provide you with personalized counseling, including your graduation plans, as well as providing you with the social and emotional support you need to be successful at an early college high school.
Sconzo provides a unique experience and a supportive environment. Let me introduce Leanne Lewis to tell you how we start each day.
Hey, everyone. Here at Sconzo Early College High School, we start every day off with what we call "family." I'm the Blue Devils family. We stay with our family throughout all four years and learn to support each other both academically and socially. We learn and grow together through team-building activities and deeper conversations. As family, we get to pick each other up when we face challenges, but most importantly, we get to celebrate our achievements.
Another thing that makes Sconzo unique are the courses we take and where we take them. Some take place here on campus, and others happen at Lone Star College, Kingwood. It's important to know that transportation is provided, but when you're able, you can drive yourself as well. There are also Sconzo staff members at Lone Star anytime we're there, so we always have support and assistance. Rigorous academics are obviously a big part of Sconzo Early College High School. Jonathan Gonzalez is going to tell us a little more about how these classes help us in high school, college, and beyond.
Avid promotes academic, social, and emotional support for all Sconzo students. We participate in Avid for all four years, with each year having a different focus. We focus on goal-setting, organization writing, and learning great study habits. During our senior year, Avid4 guides us through the college application process, including applying for our scholarships and completing our FAFSA's.
Okay, we've mentioned rigorous academics, family, and Avid, but service is another important component of our experience here at Sconzo. Herbie Holmes is going to tell you more about that.
Every week, Monday through Thursday is dedicated to our classes.
Fridays are set aside for our service and internships, which opens up opportunity for us to get out of the classroom and to serve our community. Internships such as doctor's offices, law firms, or any other opportunity related to your career are available our junior and senior year. So you can graduate high school with hundreds of hours of community service to put on your college resumes. That's impressive.
While our classes are tough, the good news is that there's a little time built in for fun and exploration. Carmen Hines is going to tell you a little bit about our clubs.
We have a total of 22 clubs that give you a chance to express yourself outside of class doing things that interest you with other people who have the same interest. We also have five honor societies that you can be a part of, such as National Honor Society, the MU Alpha Theta. And if you don't see a club that suits you, students at Sconzo are encouraged to create and lead clubs that suit them. Through this experience, I have developed leadership skills, opened up to new ideas, and met new people who share the same interests as me.
So, that just about wraps it up. Let's just take a quick moment to recap. Sconzo Early College High School is a unique, four-year learning experience that gives you the opportunity to be part of a family that helps make the experience less intimidating and more manageable, help others and gain new real-world experiences in service learning and internships, learn how to be successful in college, and get help filling out college and scholarship applications, graduate high school with an associate's degree, and explore new interests in a club. So if you're interested in the Sconzo Early College High School experience, would like more information, or have any questions, we'd love to see you at our informational meeting. Thanks for joining us, and see you soon.
We are joined tonight by some of the stars in that video, so I'd like to introduce you to Brandon Bryant. Is he here? I don't know. I guess he's not here. Okay. Cameron Hines? Nope. See, this is the problem when you call off the hurricane day. You get no ROTC, and you get no students to come be seen and be celebrated, but that's all right. Leanne Lewis? No, I don't think so. How about Herbie Holmes? Oh, yes! You did a great job, Herbie, I just got to say. It's very difficult to do those videos, and you guys were pros. Also, Principal Nichelle Scott is here, so thank you. This Saturday, we will have a building dedication at Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School. Students will offer campus tours beginning at 2:00 PM. At 3:00 PM, there will be a ceremony to commemorate the opening of the new campus and to honor the legacy of Dr. Sconzo. This event is open to the public, and we are looking forward to a very special day. So congratulations to all of you on the video, and we look forward to the dedication of the campus on Saturday. Thank you. Moving on, UMBLE ISD teachers and coaches are among the very best. We all know that. Tonight, we recognize Summer Creek High School Coach Shelton Irvin for receiving national recognition. I would like to ask Mr. Troy Kite, Executive Director of UIL Athletics and Fine Arts, to come to the podium and tell us more about this national honor.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan, School Board. At this time, if I could have Shelton and his wife come up, and then Brent and Jana and Kenny, if you guys would come up as well. As they're coming up, I'll talk to the crowd. If you're a coach, your goal when you start every season is to be the last man standing, last team standing. If you are, if you accomplish that, that means you won a championship. You know, Robert and I were talking about this Saturday at a game. To be a part of a staff that wins a state championship...
You're up here, where's mine?
To win a state championship and be a part of the staff, you're in the top 15% of all coaches that ever coached. Only 15% of all coaches that ever coached ever even get to experience that as an assistant. To do that as a head coach puts you in the top 3% of all coaches. And in 2013, Shelton led the Bulldogs to a 4A state championship. It was the first state championship in track and field that we've ever had in this district. I think Trey and I remember it vividly. He was the principal of that school. At that time, we had about six, eight hours worth of rain delays, and he was crowned state champion with those kids about 12:30 in the morning. And that puts him in the top 3% of all coaches ever coached already. But to tell the story, we need to go back of March of '20, and everybody in the room knows that's when COVID hit. We shut down schools, and we shut down sports. And so after they had gotten a meet in, we canceled their season. And then we all know, we started the 2021 school year, and it was virtual, something we've never done, and something, quite frankly, we were probably pretty clueless at at the time. And then we come back in person, and you have those things going on. And so the chaos of that, beginning of that year, is insurmountable. On top of that, he's Vice President of the Track and Field Coaches Association in our state. He's working on his master's in educational administration. And then about six and a half months ago, they were blessed, and this is where mama comes in, they were blessed with their first child, Ava Grace. Yes. And so to say that there wasn't a lot going on, that's beyond a statement. And all the time, you're working on COVID protocols, and you can't share water bottles, and you have to space out six feet apart. The chaos was beyond what most of us would realize in obtaining our success of being the last man standing. In early April, tragedy struck, and we lost Kylie Pope in a tragic ATV accident, and yet Shelton had to lead that program and that family through that tragedy. So you get to the state meet, and they weren't the favorites going in. They had a good group going up there, but they weren't the favorites. And if you're a swimming or a track and field person, you know the way you win state championships is not through individual awards. You win them by winning relays. They won in the discus, they won in the 110 hurdles, they won in the high jump, they got second in the 800 meter, and they placed in one relay, and they became state champions again. Being a two-time state champion puts him in the top 1% of all coaches. It's an elite award to be in. And with great success comes great acknowledgement from people around the country. We're very blessed that USA Track and Field and Cross Country National Organization, they give out a National Coach of the Year Award. Shelton becomes the third coach ever in the state of Texas to ever be honored with that award. I am blessed to be able to recognize him tonight as a two-time state champion and USA Track and Field National Coach of the Year. Congratulations. If possible, Ms. Dixon, Dr. Fagan, if we could get a picture with you guys and them, and I would like Mr. McDonald, Coach Harrison, and Jan in the picture as well. What impressed... Yeah, oh, yeah, that's you. You hand it to me. I'll talk. So what we did is we got a little token of our appreciation, but to show you the character of this guy, he presented at Texas High School Coaches Association this summer on track and field, and never once did he mention himself. He talked about his coaches, he talked about the teamwork, he talked about Mr. McDonald and Kenny. It truly does take a village to do what he's accomplished, and we're very blessed to have him in our district. Congratulations, Shel. Yeah.
Hold on, I want to get a little... Here we go. As I was walking back up here, Mr. Kirchhoff says, "That's good stuff." I thought that really says it, doesn't it? So impressive. Congratulations, Coach. We're so proud of you. We're proud to have you. Thank you for being part of UMBLE ISD Summer Creek High School, and congratulations. That is a huge honor.
Thank you.
This is an exciting month, I tell you. Next, September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, as you all probably remember. School Board member Chris Parker has a story she would like to share that illustrates how raising awareness for pediatric cancer benefits families.
Imagine being a child and learning that you have cancer. Imagine being the parents of a child who is diagnosed with cancer. It would feel scary. It would feel overwhelming. Casey Melgarde and her parents faced those feelings back when Casey was a student at Creekwood Middle School. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month helps families facing staggering challenges know that they are not alone. They are part of a community. In November of 1991, Casey was diagnosed with stage IV T-cell lymphoma cancer. She had a mass on her neck and one on her chest that was crushing her lungs. She was in ICU on a ventilator in dialysis for two weeks as a middle-school child. She started chemotherapy immediately. She did about 25 months of chemo. She started when she was in seventh grade at Creekwood Middle School and finished when she was a ninth grader, and wound up graduating from Kingwood High School and college. So she beat stage IV lymphoma. So fast forward 30 years, she is healthy, she is married to her husband, Aaron, who is also a Kingwood High School graduate. They have two beautiful children, Ryan and Max, who are K-Park students. Not only is Casey a product of UMBLE ISD, but she's also a teacher here in the district at Eagle Springs Elementary. So at Eagle Springs, she is known as Ms. Davis. She has been a teacher there for many years since the school opened. She was a kindergarten teacher for eight years, third-grade teacher for one year, and now she is the instructional technologist, I would say, computer teacher. So Ms. Davis shares her story on campus each year because she wants every child diagnosed with pediatric cancer to know, "You are not alone." Mrs. Davis from Eagle Springs is here with us tonight. If you would come up, please.
We love that. We're happy to be here every day, too. Our students are blessed to have Ms. Davis as a role model in UMBLE ISD. Thank you for the positive difference you make by sharing your story with others. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Jerry Monbaron, Director of Community Development, to share additional information about Gold Fight Win.
An important part of our UMBLE ISD culture is giving support to others, both outside and within our family. In September, that philanthropic support is directed to an incredibly important cause, pediatric cancer. UMBLE ISD is honored to support Gold Fight Win by partnering with three organizations: the L3 Foundation, Mothers Against Cancer, and Addie's Faith. Representing the L3 Foundation and our UMBLE ISD Gold Fight Win Committee, I would like to ask Scott Arnt to join me up front, and he's going to talk about the activities planned for this month to color our UMBLE ISD community gold. Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, everybody. Board members, nice to see you again after a year off on, I guess, now our third year kind of Gold Fight Win. Probably should have been our fifth, but between Harvey and COVID, unfortunately, I guess Nicholas didn't take too hard of a swing at us, but those of you that were around, you'll remember 2019, right? And Gold Fight Win, and just how phenomenal of a month that was, because we need more stories like that where we're celebrating kids and we're celebrating survivors and raising awareness. And that's really what and how Gold Fight Win came about, was the partnering of the three organizations that Jerry mentioned. And those of you who made that final game of September of 2019, Kingwood High School versus Atascasita, and we had, the first time we met, we said, "We're going to try to turn UMBLE ISD gold." That stadium was gold, and it was, I get choked up thinking about it, it was a pretty phenomenal evening. And this year was a little bit different, right? Kind of like what Troy said as well, that we're finding our ways in many different ways. And so one of the things that we did this year intentionally, 2019, the district helped us push. This year, with everything else that was going on, we didn't want to put a heavy burden unintentionally on any of our principals, so we let them pull. And if you've seen, if you've heard, they haven't pulled. They have wrapped their arms around Gold Fight Win, and they're dragging us along. And it's a shame, I was going to tease Mr. McDonald, but since he's gone, I guess we'll have to make fun of him with him not being here, but here's kind of what we have going on. So you have goldfightwin.org, and it's the setup website. There's a link for all the different events that are going on, and pep rallies, volleyball games, soccer games, not soccer games, I'm getting ahead of my seasons, swim meets, cross-country football games, middle schools and the high schools. Every single UMBLE ISD high school has a Gold Fight Win football game this year, and I think that's pretty special, pretty phenomenal, because that wasn't us going in to the schools. That was the principals reaching out to us and saying, "We want in." And so just a couple of quick stories for you. The first one, when we started in 2018, it was members from Gold Fight Win, meeting with Ted Landry, who was the principal at Kingwood High School back then, Andy Lewis, who's the Kingwood Phillies' dance team director, and Jamie Morris, who Jamie's our two daughters' favorite teacher. And so we started with that group, and we had that one game, and we thought, you know, maybe we'll do something. And you fast forward to the next year, we get somebody who grew up in Iowa who just gets it, and we had that big event where, thanks to Bert Brocker, we were able to show that game in Texan Live in Texas Children's Cancer Center. So all these kids that, you know, normally would be spending a Friday night by themselves with their chemo, families around, not really doing anything. They had a huge pep rally, they got to watch a football game. They were a little less interested, I think, in the football game than they were more excited about the fact that we broadcast them back live into Turner Stadium. And I can remember the crowd during that time, and so it was a great start to it. The spring, I ran into Dr. Nazra, and he said, "Scott, we have to have a Gold Fight Win football game." And he was just so passionate about it, like, "How do you say no, right?" And I'm like, "Well, we'll make it happen, Michael." And fortunately, through the partnership, we're going to be able to do that. Brent McDonald was up here. I met Brent earlier, what, probably three weeks ago? First time we ever met him, he reached out to Shannon Kohler, who's part of our committee, and we sat down with him. And by the time I was done, I was ready to go back to high school at Summer Creek. This guy's intensity and passion and commitment to the kids at Summer Creek, it's so impressive, and it's just another great example of the people that make up UMBLE ISD. But one of the things that Brent said really resonated with me, he said, "I'm in the kid Pretty powerful. And as we were sitting there talking with him, I thought, "You know what? That fits us, too, because that's what we're doing. We're in the kid business. We're trying to help kids who are fighting cancer, trying to give them longer lives, healthier lives, lives that are less toxic chemotherapies and all of that." So when somebody like Brent McDonald just wraps his arms around, and he says, "We're going to sell some shirts," we kind of laughed. We sold 600 shirts at Summer Creek in one day, and he said, "Scott, Shannon, we need another day." He goes, "We'll sell another 500." And what's important about that, $5 of every shirt is going towards research or helping a child and that child's family who are fighting cancer, because it's expensive. And I went too long. I just want to say thank you to the Board, thank you to administration for everything that you do. You're helping us realize and then some what our vision was of Gold Fight Win. I think it's going to become bigger, the elementary schools as well. I just want to touch on them, too, because 17 and counting of the elementary schools have jumped in on this. It's the principals, it's your team, and they're all out there wanting to do something to make a difference. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you.
UMBLE ISD is a very giving school district and community, and this is an absolutely perfect cause for us to partner with you on and support pediatric cancer awareness, research, and families who are going through that. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being patient with us during COVID. You know, I think that you kind of alluded to the fact, you know, we had this great start, and then COVID, and, you know, so we're coming back. So we appreciate that.
Okay, let's see. That concludes our recognitions for tonight. Superstaffers will resume next month in October.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than one minute. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. The first person signed up for public comment is Eric Willing. Please come up. And one thing I think that was left out on here is that we are limiting tonight to one minute. minute.
Good evening. My name is Eric Willing with UMBLE Parents Care. Last year was an exercise in what if. This year, right now, today is an exercise in what now. COVID is here. It's spreading. It is not under control. It is not going away. But it is time. It is time to do what is inconvenient, what requires effort. It is time to be accountable to these children and one another, and thus far, your voice and your leadership have been absent. We are all waiting for more. Forty-two percent of their waking hours are spent at school. The likelihood of them contracting a illness while at school is higher than any other activity. Elementary school cases have increased by 197%, district cases by 122 over last year in the first five weeks. 6% of students, 9.4% of staff in five weeks. Five. The likelihood of them contracting COVID again is high. Trust in your district leadership is imperative for the community to align and work together against a common threat. District leadership and guidance-
Thank you, sir. Oops, sorry. Thank you for your time.
For the collective responsibility to work together towards helping save our schools-
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next person signed up for public comment is Rebecca Trebo.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. I'm trying to hurry because I know that time is limited. You guys come over here. I just wanted to talk really quick. I'm here with also UMBLE Parents Care. I know they gave you guys packets. You have things to look at. One thing that I thought was really important to talk about was the common goals, right? Because if you look at it, we all have common goals, right? I think you can pull far apart, but we can talk about common goals, and that's in-person learning. Like, we all think that in-person learning is best. We know that it's best to progress. Like, we all, we know this, we agree, this is common thoughts. My little snippet that I want to talk about is staffing. It's hard to keep appropriate student-to-teacher ratios when over 9% of your staff is tested positive, and I know we have guest teachers. And that works in some schools, luckily, kind of where we live, but less so in other. So I'm just urging you guys to really reflect on our staffing procedures and what that could look like, keeping them safe and employed and in our schools so that our kids can stay in our schools, learning in person. Thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The next person signed up for public comment is Harvey Trebo Ruckman. And by the way, your time doesn't start until you start speaking. Thank you.
My name is Harvey, and I have been a student in UMBLE ISD for over five years. One and a half of those years have been online. Eight days into the school year, someone in my class got COVID. A week later, several others got sick. I think if you were to consider a mask mandate, since kids my age can't get vaccinated, it would be very wise. If you do mandate masks, I would be very thankful. I also hope the number of cases go down as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Harvey. The next person signed up is Blake Harper.
Hello, good evening. I'm Blake Harper. I'm a father to a kindergartner at Bear Branch Elementary School, and I'm here with UMBLE Parents Care as well. I'm here to talk about the need to respond to symptoms. Right now, we have confusion and conflicting information in our schools about what's supposed to happen when family exposures occur. We have kids that are headed back to the classroom that have symptoms, that are potentially exposing more students and more families to COVID-19. What will we do? There are other school districts that have policies in place that help protect children and teachers from these exposures. We need to look at how we can affect, put protocols in place that will help protect them, like potentially having school nurses that will actually test kids before they send them back, or at least acknowledge parents so that they can go and get them tested when there is an exposure in the classroom. We need to protect our school nurses because right now they're drowning, and we have to do something. How can you respond? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Molly Ross.
Hi, I'm Molly Ross with UMBLE Parents Care to talk about disrupted education. Virtual learning has a waitlist and is not widely available. There are little to no assignments or educating during quarantine due to lack of protocol. Absences currently are up 30% in some of our schools. We need a seamless transition for students under quarantine, meaning assignments readily available, teachers and tutors available for students that need assistance, stay-at-home COVID protocol, like Clear Creek ISD or many other districts across the state for kids with positive tests or close contact that are quarantined. The community perception is that it's difficult to switch to student or virtual if a spot exists. I have two children at Green Tree Elementary School that are currently in virtual learning, not because of this statement, but our protocols are a literal joke to the parents in my elementary school. A mom told me last week after her son's class was exposed, and none of them are masked.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
None of us kept our kids home after. I mean, we don't want them at home driving us all crazy. Yeah, we sent them back to class.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Erin Green.
Hello, my name is Erin Green. I'm here to talk about CRT, Critical Race Theory. It is in our district if we have brain pop, and I checked, we do. One of the things that's out there, it's called the Black Lives Matter protest. It has George Floyd in there. And don't get me wrong, it was wrong what happened to him. He deserved his day in court. That's our constitution. But do you know who Timba is? Tony Timba, he was in Dallas, Texas. He was killed the same way, and you could hear, you should watch the video, it's shocking. The police officers are laughing as he's begging because he cannot breathe. The only problem is, he's white. Now, why is that any different? All life is precious, and when we're teaching children this, we're teaching them to hate. We're also teaching, we're separating us, and that is very common in communist countries to do that, to take over. That we do it with Democrats and Republicans. I'm not going to fight anymore. Kids are precious. I heard a nine-year-old girl, I'm going to finish, and then I'll stop. I heard a nine-year-old girl that said that she likes her friends not for their skin color, but because they make her kind. They are kind, and they make me laugh.
Thank you.
I think it's ridiculous that you tell us that right now that we have one minute.
Ms. Green, thank you. Our next person up for public comment is virtual, Stacy Smith.
Hi, I'm Stacy with UMBLE Parents Care. Please refer to page nine, slide 17 to 18 in your handout. I'm here to talk about the need to respond to the spread of COVID in our schools. Cases in our district are surging due to an increase of close contacts with so few wearing masks and the Delta variant. Schools providing in-person instruction should prioritize two prevention strategies: universal and correct use of masks required and physical distancing maximized. In March, the district conducted a mask survey. 70% of parents and 69% of staff respondents wanted to keep masks. Dr. Fagan and her team also did a study on the effect of removing masks and found it would increase close contacts, learning disruptions, and positive cases. The board voted to keep masks then, and the spread is much worse now. TEA has advised mask provisions of GA 38 are not being enforced. Our district can shift the narrative from parents' choice for their student to wear masks to strongly urge parents to mask their children for the immediate timeframe. Words matter. Strongly urge, request, expect, versus warmly welcome. All prevention strategies provide some level of protection, and layered strategies implemented at the same time provide the greatest level of protection. Schools should adopt prevention strategies to the largest extent practical. A layered approach-
Thank you. Our next person for public comment is Willow Smith.
In third grade, I was virtual for the whole year. I was really excited to go back, but after a few weeks, that changed. Eight people in my class got COVID, and nine people got it in my switch class. One of my friends got the virus and didn't go back to school for a long time. Her parents were so sad, they took her out of school. She wore a mask and a face shield, and she still got COVID. Two people in my class brought COVID to their parents, and now their parents are in the hospital. And when the counselor interviewed me, I was stuck on this one question. Do you feel safe at school? I said, yes, even though it was a lie. I didn't feel safe at school because nobody is wearing masks. So I suggest that you fix this by urging people to wear masks.
Thank you, Willow. Next, we have Frances Smith.
Your school board, you are getting coronavirus too much. You need to make other people wear a mask. Please wear a mask. I want to be safe. Please keep me safe and others too.
Thank you very much. Our next person signed up virtually is Holly Matherley. Is she there? She's muted. Ms. Matherley, can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Holly Matherley. The information I'm sharing with you is found on slides 11 through 14 of your packets. UMBLE Parents Care wanted to know what mitigation measures other school districts are using and how these measures are working. We compared nine districts with similar enrollments and starting dates to UMBLE ISD. As you can see on page 11, UMBLE ISD has the highest percentage of cases among these districts. Next, we compared the districts' COVID protocols. On page 12, you can see the areas such as advanced air filtration that we share in common with these districts. And in virtual learning, UMBLE is leading the way. However, page 14 shows areas where the successful districts are doing things that we are not, such as COVID testing and requiring all students to remain at home when there is a COVID-positive family member. What can UMBLE ISD learn from these districts? How will you respond? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shannon Young.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Shannon Young. I have two children at Timbers Elementary. My fourth grader caught COVID not even three weeks into this school year. It took her a full seven days to recover. This could have been prevented. There were no protections put in place to keep her safe. No masks, no social distancing, no barriers between students on desks, no contract tracing. How dare you do so little to protect our children? I lay the blame at your feet since you refuse to do the right thing. A mask mandate is needed. Our numbers keep rising, and more children are getting sick. When will it become clear to you that the decisions you are making are reckless and dangerous? My first grader wears a mask all day with no issue. It's not hard. It's uncomfortable, but it's not hard. Other districts are fighting to keep mask mandates in place. Why aren't you? Houston ISD superintendent said if we can save just one child, it's worth it. How sad you don't feel the same. You have no business making decisions for children. It makes no sense to politicize this and not follow the medical guidance that you are receiving from our local medical community. This is a health crisis, and your lack of action-
Next, Kate Brown. No? Okay, thank you. Next, Sarah Cook.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sarah Cook with UMBLE Parents Care. I'm here to talk about the need to respond to outbreaks. Outbreaks are not handled swiftly for school. Delayed notification to family and no mandatory quarantine has caused a surge in classroom spread. For example, parents at Eagle Springs Elementary weren't notified of updates to protocols until 12 days after the outbreak began. Solutions include contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine and temporary closures as needed. Fast action produces better results. Alternative actions include developing class pods, allowing parents to choose a masked pod, allowing a choice between quarantining or masking after a positive class case. Principals, teachers, and staff feel that their hands are being tied in enacting stricter protocols and communicating the reality of the situation in the school. Another concern is that indoor events like pep rallies and dances can further virus spread. Alternatives include limit attendance to students only, increase outdoor activities, limit indoor activities, and include masks. There is a community perception that UMBLE ISD continues to sponsor large events with no protocols of regard to community transmission. How will you respond to these outbreaks?
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Baker-Hendershot. Nope. Okay. Deana Hawkins.
Hi, my name is, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Deana Hawkins, and I'm with UMBLE Parents Care. And I have three students enrolled in UMBLE ISD, and I'm here to talk about increasing social distancing opportunities, adding fresh air options, and not sharing enough supplies amongst students. And we're all here together, and we're all trying to do the best that we can together, so offering solutions. One solution is reinstating effective strategies that limited spread last year. We're still fighting this virus. It is still running rampant. So why did we do away with the things that really worked last year? Adding filtration in portable buildings immediately to protect those students. Provide secondary schools the ability for outdoor lunches. Provide distance in elementary lunches by utilizing protocols from last year and other outdoor options. Provide staggered class passing periods for secondary schools, especially in the schools that are overcrowded, and require that no supplies are shared amongst any students within the district.
Hawkins, but your time is up. Thank you very much. Next, Dr. Ruth Ann Luna.
Hi, I'm Dr. Ruth Ann Luna from Baylor College of Medicine and Texas Children's Hospital. We are continuing to see very high positivity rates in our kids, and we're also seeing that anticipated increase in MISC. I can't speak to the legal issues regarding mask mandates. However, words matter, and I once again ask you to change the narrative from warmly welcome mask to highly recommend or respectfully request. This is based on consensus statements from the leadership in the entire Texas Medical Center, as well as to the children's hospitals nationally. With regard to positive cases, specific instructions regarding quarantine of all household members, both students and staff, in accordance with the new TA guidelines would be extremely helpful. I'd also like to ask that district share crucial and consistent information with all school nurses and staff regarding COVID symptoms, as well as symptoms of post-COVID complications like myocarditis and MISC indicators. Finally, I'd like to ask that where appropriate, current information about SARS-CoV-2 is shared with our students. We owe it to them to provide objective information regarding the virus and the vaccine so that they can advocate for themselves and make truly informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Patrice Schumate. Next, we have Patrice Schumate.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Patrice Schumate with UML Parents Care and I'm here to talk about the need to create district testing sites on and off campus. It is too hard to differentiate between illnesses when children are exhibiting any kind of symptom. Testing can be difficult to get quickly, which means parents are constantly deciding what to do about the sniffles or a close contact notice. Parents and staff are forced to search for appointments or home tests and they can be hard to find when there are surges in our community. I'm sure you're all aware of this. Starting September 15th, the DSHS has partnered with the TEA to fund district testing sites. You can see the information in our handout on page 16. We need district testing sites for students and teachers and possibly families, and we hope that you will take advantage of the DSHS funding. Other Texas schools are offering district testing for students, staff, families, as well as on-campus rapid testing by a nurse with parent permission. How will you respond to the need for district testing sites and on-campus testing? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Walker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Rachel Walker, mother of two UML ISD children. Board members and Dr. Fagan, thank you for your efforts in managing the district during difficult times. You have implemented COVID safety protocols, but more needs to be done. We should revisit practices from last year, especially since we are not mandating masks. Number one, visitors. Rather than limit visitors, we should be eliminating visitors on campuses, not core to learning or services. Number two, large events. For large events like pep rallies, we should be conducting these outside only. We should highly consider canceling nice-to-have events which are not core to learning. Number three, class period changes. These should be staggered for middle school and high school to avoid overcrowded hallways. Number four, lunch periods. Elementary students should be eating in their classrooms or small groups during lunchtime. Outside eating areas are not consistent. Only in providing layers of protection, starting at a district level, can we hope to curb COVID. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Luliana Ledwick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Luliana Ledwick with UML Parents Care. I'm here to talk about the need to respond to COVID quarantine protocols. Currently, UML ISD has relaxed and loosened protocols when it comes to COVID that vary by schools. Currently, if a child is exposed to a COVID positive family member but doesn't show symptoms, they can attend school. Can UML ISD follow the footsteps that Clear Creek ISD has implemented with regards to COVID protocols? It is required by that school district that when a child has a COVID positive case in their household, the school district requires that the student be excluded from school for a minimum of 10 days, even if the student tests negative. How will you respond? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Roger Daley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Roger Daley. I'm also with UML Parents Care. I'm here to talk about the needs to respond to the lack of COVID protocols in our schools. Why is our district ignoring the medical community and their guidance? CDC guidelines recommend universal masking of all students ages 2 and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. In addition, three feet of physical space between students, screen testing, and contact tracing. Last month, the leaders of the major Houston systems, including Texas Children Memorial Hermann, Houston Methodist St. Luke's, and Baylor College MS, shared an open letter to the people of Houston in which they laid out guidelines and COVID protocols, including vaccination of faculty, staff, eligible students, universal masking, distancing, limiting or eliminating visitors. This is what our medical experts and scientists are saying. Transparency requires informing the community who are the medical experts you are listening to that are saying it is safe to return to normal. That masking, distancing, and contact tracing should be optional. We deserve transparency. How will you respond?
Mr. Daley, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Kristi Resendez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me start my video. Sorry. Okay. Hi, I'm Kristi Resendez with UML Parents Care. Your positions receive their fair share of critique and criticisms. HPC is bringing information that's factual and echoed by all scientific and medical communities. None of this is about opinion or personal comforts. Our lives are being affected daily. We created a place people could share their experiences because no one else was asking how we are doing. Of course, one minute is not enough to share the hardships of our reality. They were emailed to you earlier today. Those of you who have kids or grandkids in the district, think about how their lives are affected when they become ill or their friends or teachers. Now think about all the other kids in our district. Think about the fear they may have walking into a school that doesn't feel as safe as it did last year. In just a few weeks, we have worked to respond to concerns and struggles by saying, we are sorry things are hard for your family. We have met with the administration, are continuing to follow it, to bring needed change to our district. And we are here tonight, sharing with all of you. What will your response be? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is comments by individual board members, starting with Mr. Kirchhoff.
I want to first congratulate that Summer Creek program, the coaches that were up here. It's pretty amazing to win two state titles. And the bigger picture is what he's doing, he's building the young kids' lives, the boys and girls. It's amazing testament and I'm glad the school district has him and his assistant coaches. I also want to thank all the people that were here or called in. It's tough to voice your opinion, even if there's disagreements, but I want to lastly say thank you to Chris Parker for having us wear these shirts, these, and bring in awareness. These are fantastic.
And it's great. It's great pride and something that we all can get behind and help our kids bring awareness to cancer, so. Hope it stays positive the rest of the week. Everybody has a good week and it's so much easier to smile. It's more fun. And great job to the administration in front of us. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison.
Kudos to Summer Creek. I enjoyed watching them play footballs this weekend and the, you know, the thing about going to a football game, you get to see the dancers, you get to see the band, you get to see the kids, you get to see the football players, and kudos to a great weekend. I had the privilege of seeing UML High School and the new coach. And it was a great experience and listening to the students from Guy's Gonzales Early College just, you know, it gets your heart beating because they, they turn out so many exceptional students, so. And that will be a wonderful experience Saturday and I hope to see everybody. And just to listen to the kids, how, you know, they do such a great job. And I'm like, Mr. Kirchhoff, it's, it's good to see smiles. It's good to see the things that, that everything that is in place and that teachers are happy, the, the kids are happy and they're getting out there and they're doing things. So I'm gonna cut mine short. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Toomey.
So I want to start off by, I guess, congratulating all of the students at Guy and Skanzo High School. I'm so excited that they get a home. So I moved to the district in 1997 and I was trying to think of where they've been. They've been at the Community Learning Center, Summer Creek High School, Lone Star, UML High School, and where are they now? Home. They are home. And that is a big deal. It's a big deal for that school. It's a big deal for the identity of that school. So not only do they have a new home, but they have a new name, named after the leader who really championed that concept, which I think nothing is better than that. I also want to highlight, just for anyone out there listening, especially listening at home, Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. We have reconstituted that and there is September 16th, so this Thursday or next Monday, the 20th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the New Lakeland. Please, if you are a parent, a staff member, a student, a resident, a taxpayer, or if you are in the district, if you care about the district, come and serve on that Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. I know there's a couple of us up here who were not on the school board at the time of the last one, but we served on that committee and it is vital to helping us make decisions going forward. So I just wanted to sort of highlight that. And then I want to say thank you to several of the people that spoke in our, in our public comment today for respectfully voicing their disagreement. I think that respectfully voicing disagreement is the way that we build and become stronger and that is a great way to demonstrate how disagreement should be voiced. We have not always had that, that type of respect over these last few weeks or even a couple of years. And so those, those people that did show respect, I just wanted to give them a shout out and say thank you to that. Okay?
That's it. Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Madam President. This has been a week of sports. It's that time of year, right? So congratulations, UML High School, on your big win and it's just been a joy to go to all the football games and see the band, the dancers, see all the games. But I did have a highlight this week and it was sports related. I was able to attend the Miracle League at the Insperity Adaptive Sports Complex and it just brought pure joy to my heart to see all of the students in the district being able to participate and I really, really, really enjoyed it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sitton.
Yes, and I'll be brief. I'm gonna withhold some of my comments for later on in the agenda, but as far as Early College, Skanzo Early College, ditto to what Ms. Toomey was saying. They've been bouncing around for many years and finally have a home. What most people don't realize is it is one of the most acclaimed, highly touted, early college programs in the state of Texas. They're always in the top two or three academic institutions in the state of Texas with kids that are earning. We're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 graduates with over 90% getting their associate degree along with their high school diploma and getting scholarships to Ivy League schools and local schools. So what a fantastic program. Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00, they're gonna have an open house, giving tours and with a ceremony presentation at 3:00, open to the community. We'd love to see you there. And yes, Ms. Parker, talking about sports, we love going to Miracle League and it was great seeing you out there Saturday. But what about the Atascocita Eagle Football Team going to Allen and knocking off a team that had never lost in nine years in their new stadium? You may remember back in 2012, they were on, in all the media. They spent some ridiculous figure on this football stadium and had not been beat in that stadium. And Allen, I mean, and Tascota goes up on the road in a hostile environment and not only beat them, beat them pretty bad. So, and then they turned around and followed it up with another win. So they're 3-0. I know Summer Creek just left and, and so when Troy was talking about how hard it is to win a state championship, 1989, I was coaching at Alden High School and we got beat by Odessa Permian in the state finals. Outrushed them, had more offense, more everything, but we also had more fumbles and we lost. Went back the next year and we won it. The third year, we got to the semifinals. So to win the state title twice, let alone, well, win it, win it once is tough. Win it twice, it is extremely difficult. So hats off to them. And then I wish Kenny Ray was still here because Summer Creek coming off a a little bit of a disappointment last year, they have come back and are really playing some really good football. So really excited about that and the volleyball that's going on right now throughout the district. I mean, we have a lot to be, be proud of in UML ISD with what our kids are doing. So I will leave it at that and pick it up later in the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Sitton. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Ms. Madam President. I appreciate it. First, I just want to say, and I'm sure we all agree, very thankful that we were pretty much spared with Hurricane Nicholas and some others in the overall region weren't as quite as lucky, but I'm just very thankful to wake up this morning and see that things were still intact. And I also want to thank Dr. Johnson and Ms. Whitaker for the time they spent with Ms. Parker and I regarding literary assessments and giving us a deeper dive into that. And that way, maybe I will have less questions the next time they do the the three-month updates. But it was great because it really gave me a good sense of where that is and going and how we're gonna approach math. So I appreciate that. And again, also thank all of our community members who spoke this evening and those who have emailed us over the last three, four weeks. And we, we appreciate hearing from people and it's, it's great for them to share their, their concerns, their opinions. Will, it's, there's an information item on the agenda. They'll, we'll have a chance to comment in, in more depth at that time. I'm gonna cut it there because I'm gonna take up a little more time when we get to finance.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like to thank the people who spoke tonight. We do have an information item, as Mr. Scarfo said, so we will be able to have an opportunity to go over what we do have in place in UML ISD. Ms. Parker, I want to thank you for suggesting we wear the yellow shirts and for pediatric cancer awareness. I'm, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I couldn't, you know, guess, but I'm pretty sure all of us in some way, even here, everybody that's here today has been touched in some way by cancer. So really do appreciate that. And also sharing Casey's story, because I did not know about that story and it's very moving. Thank you. I'm super excited and looking forward to Saturday to dedicate the quest early college high school inspiring moments and just seeing the students, all of it, just wonderful. It is great that they finally have a home. I know I'm building and planning. We have talked about this for quite a while. So it's really nice to see it come to fruition. And that's basically it. I'll save all of my comments for later as well. Thank you. Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. We do have a number of agenda items that address some of the kind of key things happening in the district. I, I did want to say thanks Nolan Correa, Kenny Kendrick and that team, Chief Cook and his team. When we have big storms and everybody's hunkering down, they're not, they're going out. They're looking at buildings, they're checking buildings, they're making sure that a small problem doesn't become a big problem. And so in the midst of everything else, thank you to those teams for all hands on deck. They're the reason that we open tomorrow and we have power everywhere and we have chillers everywhere and we're gonna be purging air and all those things that are so important right now. We talk about HVAC systems now more than any time in my career and so having those up is very important. And I, I too was very grateful this morning that I got up and, you know, Kingwood High School is intact and you know, they're doing all that work right now, floodproofing. So we just need a little more time, Mother Nature, just a little more before we can have any kind of, of major storm, but I hope that we never see that again anyway. I did want to mention that many of the speakers tonight were from UML Parents Care and I and many members of my team spent about an hour and a half with that, with representatives from that group. We went over the, the slides in the presentation they presented. It was a really great conversation. It was dialogue both directions. I think we all got a lot more understanding about, you know, what kind of things that they were concerned about and I think that they understood sort of our position in the situation also a little better. And I'll save some of those more specific things that the district is doing and has been doing. I think there is some misinformation that we would like to clear up. And I just want to put a plug in for the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. That is Thursday. I know everyone's super busy, but first of all, if you haven't seen Lakeland, that in itself is a treat and you should come just for that. Because that building is like no elementary school you've ever seen in your life and you should see it because it's inspiring and I hope it's the future of elementary education design where you bring Google together with children's museums and, and make places where children want to be every day. Not places that look like prisons and hospitals, but places that look fun and inspiring where you would choose to do your homework if you had homework. where you would choose to do your homework if you had homework to do. So if, if you don't come for many other reasons, come that and we'll convince you to stay for more. But it is a great opportunity. We have done the, the study, the rooftops to flower beds, the integration of the Unifier Study, all these pieces and parts. And now it's time for us to share that information back with the community and have the community tell us the, the projects that they are excited about and what they would like to see happen. So we can come together and, and bring a great recommendation to this board. And then also Saturday, again, Skonsa Early College High School dedication. So happy they have a home, long overdue. It's a program that is, as Mr. Sitton said, renowned in the state. And so now they have a facility to match their success. So very proud of all the work that they've done. And that's it on those topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Our last opening item is updates from board associations and committees. The first committee is the Advocacy Committee. Mrs. Timmy?
So happy to report, it actually feels like old news now because it's been like, what, like a week? Or maybe two, that we have a virtual learning bill that has been passed. It is, it is done. It is a done deal. That is something that we've been working on for a long time. It was not perfect. There are a couple of question marks that, that were kind of details that, that will be sort of hammered out in rulemaking that we're still kind of working on to make sure we get the proper funding for all those kiddos that are in, in that program. But I'm just excited and looking forward to moving on to our next advocacy project.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison?
No formal report.
Thank you. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitton?
Yes, so we had a full presentation at last board meeting. But a couple of things you're gonna see on the agenda tonight that was not mentioned during that, during the last board meeting. One, one is purchasing the four acres across Umbel High School next to the Waffle House. If you went out to the Junior Olympics, we were using that for parking, overflow parking. Parking's always been an issue, and we've been given the opportunity to pick that piece of property up. So that's on your agenda. We also are gonna be looking at general contractor for North Belt Elementary rebuild. Guaranteed maximum price for Umbel High School renovations. Let's see. And then when we get down to information items, we're gonna be looking at the Detention Pond Project. Also some more information about North Belt. And that is all we have.
That's all?
That's it. That's all we have this time.
Thank you. Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that's me. Actually, I reached out to Karen later this afternoon. So she's going to reach out to you, Mr. Sitton, and you, Mrs. Morrison, to get something scheduled for after the next board meeting. Okay. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to get through this pretty quickly. We had a rather lengthy meeting. It was good. But just let me, before that, there's two items, three items actually on the consent agenda. Two of them are related, one having to do with the bond transfers of 8.5, or transfer of $8.5 million for North Belt. And it's tied to the resolution that we also have in front of us to allow us to temporarily use those, to use fund balance until bonds are actually sold, which will happen. We're looking at the November to January timeframe. And we're hoping that the rates will stay, and they look very attractive at this point, and possible even as low as 2.75%. So once that, those bonds are sold, fund balance will go, will go back. But there is a resolution for it to look at. And the other thing on the consent agenda is very important to us, the tax roll approval. We finally, we did get that from HCAD on August 16th. And I'm glad to say that, looking at the evaluation that they came back to us with of about $20.4 billion, that's pretty much right on target with the number we used, just slightly lower in our budgeting process. So there won't be any impact to our budget items. We won't have to cut things back because we're gonna have a smaller base. So that, that was good, good news. And as for the meeting itself, and I thank my board colleagues who attended that as well. We spent some, a good amount of time with our bond advisor discussing bond capacity for this next bond issue that we've discussed, that we're hopefully shooting for, for next May, May of '22. And we're, we're looking at that of a range. And it's, all the scenarios we looked at, though, the one non-negotiable is that the debt service portion of the tax rate would not increase. It would stay at 35 cents per hundred. So that, that's one thing that was in all of that. But it's, we got a lot of scenarios to look at, and we'll, we'll finalize a number along with, with the board as to what we will seek in the next election. But again, and it's been mentioned twice, and I'll give it one-third promo. Yeah, it's a good idea to come and see what it's all about, to be, to serve on a bond advisory committee. And you may just want to stick around for those couple of months because it's, it is a lot of fun. You really get to see under the hood, as they say, as far as how things work in the district. And not only that, you also have a say. You, you can really say, because there's gonna be a lot of items on there. But just like with your home budgets, your household budgets, you have to prioritize because you can't do everything. And I'll tell you, even if our, our capacity was $2 billion, that probably still wouldn't be enough for everything that could be on that list. So it's not that high, by the way. But I'm just saying, so come out and, come out and check it out. It's, it'd be a great time. Then also, just as importantly, we discussed at length the, the alternative health plan for the, it's good to see that for the current school year, participation's up 22% versus last year. Although we did finish the planned year with a million-dollar deficit. That's after our stop-loss coverage and even the, the ESER COVID reimbursement. But we did not propose, and we did not make a rate change for this current year. But I will say that because of legislation that passed, we will have to decide by the end of, well, soon. We will have to make a decision soon as to whether or not we're gonna keep our alternative plan in place or we're gonna go with the TRS plan. We no longer will have the option, either as a District of Innovation, to offer two plans. So that, that decision is coming down the road, and that's, that's too bad. And we also reviewed, we got an update on where the district stands on the various tranches of ESER funding. Remember, there's, you know, first, second, and third. And, and I'll tell you, I just want to tip the hat to our district divisions led by the finance group. They've done a great job of documenting all the expenses that we can apply to ESER I and II so that we are not going to be leaving any money on the table. And then they also provided, and the board has seen it now, a detailed budget proposal, if you will, recommendations for the ESER $3. And I think that was 37 million, Mr. Beatty, or 34? The number keeps changing, so I forgot to write that down. So there's that. And then, and Mr. Beatty made a recommendation to the committee, and I, and we'd like to go on and we'll make that to the entire board, that we start to provide in October and February to interested employees, a webinar that TRS has on retirement process. And I can tell you, it's a great idea. Having gone through it just recently with my wife, Jamie, going through retirement, they, TRS has a, they call it a booklet. It's 85 pages. That's not a booklet, in my opinion. And I'll tell you what, it, it's, it'd be great to have people get some insights as to what they need to do. And then also, there's an item that's on the agenda. Ms. Morrison will read it. It's on the action item agenda for the tax rate. And I just want to say, though, that the motion states that we're increasing the tax rate by, or the tax rate is 2.8% higher than the no new revenue rate. Okay, and that's a legislative term where you have to compare your last year's valuations with this year's valuations at last year's rate. And so if what you're gonna collect in total for this year is gonna be higher than that, you have to say that the rate is higher. When in actuality, I just have to share this, that if you look at last year's approve rate versus this year, rate that we hope to approve tonight, if the rest of the board approves it, is actually 3.25% lower. So, okay. And then if you look at the other calculation that we have to do as a district, and all districts do, something called the voter-approved tax rate, the rate we're proposing tonight is 2.4% lower than that rate. So we still have to tell you that the vote, the rate we're voting on tonight is 2.8% higher than the no-new revenue rate. I'm here to assure you that, take a deeper look because your effective rate is gonna be lower this year than it was last year. And I'll leave it at that because I don't want to run afoul of statute. But I just, just needed to make that point because that's crazy stuff. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, just a real quick question, either from Mr. Scarf or, or from Mr. Beatty. And that's regarding the health plan. I remember back when, when we moved into TRS Care back in 2011. And that was, that was a pretty, pretty contentious debate here at the, here at the, the desk. So as y'all go through that, I assume that we're gonna be given all that data to discuss here, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And, and the, the common, you know, the investment in the plan of additional $1 million is an investment in our staff to not have a, a plan change so that their premiums don't increase. You know, when, what other, what you have to do to make these plans work is you either have to change the plan, right, cover differently, or you have to raise the premiums. And we did neither of those things. So Mr. Beatty kept the plan the same and the premiums the same because we wanted our staff to receive their compensation improvements in total and not have to pay additional premiums or endure plan design changes that ultimately hit the pocketbook in a different way. So, so I think it's a great investment, and I think it's a great comment. And the plan has provided a, a service to our staff that's also gonna be part of that, that conversation also, so.
Okay. And I just want to reiterate that $2 billion number was a joke.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's a joke. It's an example. Okay. Education Foundation, Mr. Kurchoffer?
Thank you, Madam President. We had our executive committee meeting this morning. And two months from today, pretty close, November 12th, Kingwood Country Club is the annual golf tournament. It's two months away. So for everybody listening in or watching us and the people here, if each one of us would just tell five people, we'd sell it out and get, be on two courses. They've got the marsh course and the island course, November 12th. So I gotta read it off my phone. I apologize. UmbelISDFoundation.org. Everybody do their part. Let's sell it out and get more scholarships for the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurchoffer. Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Ms. Timmy?
No update at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. Action items from closed session. Item 4A, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Morrison, do I have a motion?
I move, Madam President, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, 7-0. The motion passes. Moving to item five, our consent agenda. 5A, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. Consent. Item 5B, goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5C, budget transfers and amendments, including encumbrance carry forward, 15% budget carry forward, forward, TRS on behalf, and COVID supplies. Consent. Item 5D, bond fund transfers and amendments. Consent. Item 5E, bond reimbursement resolution. Consent. Item 5F, tax refunds. Consent. Item 5G, waiver of PNI. Consent. Item 5H, 2021 tax roll. Consent. Item 5I, removal of tax accounts from delinquent tax roll. Consent. Item 5J, board authorization of inter-local agreements. Consent. Item 5K, approval of RFP number 2021-003R-0701, supplies, equipment, and services for students with disabilities. Consent. Item 5L, approval of RFP number 2021-005-03R, general merchandise. Consent. Item 5M, approval of RFP number 2021-006R-51, educational service consultant. Consent. Item 5N, approval of RFP number 2021-007R-02A, educational and curriculum subscriptions, internet, web-based access, and software. Consent. Item 5O, approval of RFP number 2022-13, plumbing parts and supplies. Consent. Item 5P, approval of RFP number 2022-101, miscellaneous instructional material. Consent. Item 5Q, approval of RFP 2022-02, musical instrument repairs, parts and supplies. Consent. Item 5R, purchase of four acres of real property located on Wilson Road in Umbel, Texas. Consent. Item 5S, general contractor selection for North Belt Elementary Replacement Project, CSP 2022-15. Consent. Item 5T, guaranteed maximum price, GMP amendments 1 and 2, Umbel High School renovations and additions project. Consent. Item 5U, additional staff positions for 2021, 2022. Consent. Item 5V, temporary pay increases for certain seasonal temporary and non-exempt hourly auxiliary employees. Consent. Item 5W, District of Innovation Plan Amendment. Consent. Item 5X, waiver for reading instrument, 7th grade only. Consent. Mrs. Morrison, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda items A through X. A through X.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes, 7-0. I know, wow. Okay, so we do not need to return to any pooled items. Great, so let's move on to item six on our action items. Okay, moving to item six, our action items. Item 6A, 2021 tax rate adoption. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the ordinance to set tax rate for 2021, which will adopt a total tax rate of $1,3389 per $100 of a taxable value. That is .9889 MNO and .35 INS. By this motion, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1,3389, which is effectively a 2.8% increase in the tax rate. The adopted maintenance and operation rates, rate is .9889, and the debt service rate is .35 for a 2021 total tax rate of $1.3389.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Mr. Scarfo mentioned earlier, the language that is used is legislative language. If you look at it, the MNO rate for 2020 was 1.03405. The new MNO rate is .9889, which is actual decrease of .04515. So your actual tax rate that is gonna be on your tax bill is less than it was last year. But due to the language that has to be used, it's a little deceiving, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Scarfo and Mr. Sitton for clarifying that because I think it's extremely confusing. So thank you for that.
And it's a big difference too. I mean, three and a quarter percent difference is, yeah.
That's a big difference.
It's a big difference, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, the motion passes, 7-0. Next is our information, or our information items. Item 7A, annual report, school health advisory council. Any questions or discussion from the board? Do you have anything, Dr. Fagan? Okay. Next is item 7B, renaming North Belt Elementary. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, I'll take this. So, anytime you start looking at rebuilding schools, relocating schools, rebranding schools, it's never as easy as just saying, hey, you know, let's, let's change this. So, North Belt Elementary is the, I guess, the second oldest school in use right now. Actually, it's the oldest school in use right now. And Foster's the second oldest. I believe that's right. And it was named North Belt because it was built on the old North Belt, which is now the same Houston Tollway. The new location is going to be moved down Old Umbel Road or South Houston Avenue, close to Three Mile Bend, if you want to know, off of, off of Bender Road there in Audubon Park. It's a beautiful wooded track. And what we want to do, the building and planning committee and the administration, is potentially have a conversation of rebranding that school to more reflect its new surroundings. Nothing to vote on tonight, just wanted to put that out there, give you something to think about. And then we would come back at a, at a future board meeting to discuss.
Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, we won't follow the normal track of, you know, the other schools where the attendance zone, parents, community members would offer opinions as to name and...
Oh, yeah, as far as that, yes, but, 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 but it, it has to be a board decision if we want to rebrand it before we take that next step.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You see what I'm saying? Yeah, so this is really to start that, that conversation. If it's something, if it's a road we want to go down, and then, of course, we would bring in the community to look at different name options and mascots and all that kind of good stuff.
I mean, we would definitely have input from parents and students, I think, but like you said, that we would have to make that decision. I mean, I think even we could discuss all of those details about, like, if we want to have like a wall with memorabilia, remembering North Belt or however that works out, but yes, likewise, exactly. So, I mean, is there anyone completely opposed to this idea so that building and planning can move forward with the process, bring it to the full board? Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is item 7C, HHS Complex Detention Pond Project. Any questions or discussions? We do have some.
I do have a few slides, if you wouldn't mind, just as a refresher.
Thank you.
So, as you all know, we started the process of new Lakeland and a lot of construction on the greater Umbel High School and Turner complex. And to do a proper flood control, we have to have a large detention area. And as the trees started coming down on Will Clayton Parkway, we started to hear about that from a lot of different people who wanted to, well, they really liked the trees, but they wanted to make sure that whatever was going in place of the trees was going to be a good thing. And we have some other detention ponds in front of Atascida High School, near Summer Creek High School. The one near Summer Creek, Generation Park has talked about wanting to see those changed and improved. We've had conversations about the ones in front of Atascida High School also. We certainly do not love the one on Wilson Road that is a dry detention pond. It's, it's unfortunately, just whatever the, the deal is, it collects garbage. And so, as we were moving forward with such a large detention area on this property, it's also the entrance to the visitor's side of Turner, the entrance to Lakeland Elementary School, perhaps the, the entrance to the future Ross Sterling Middle School, also the entrance for the cosmetology program at Umbel High School and the community clinic, Memorial Harmon Community Clinic. So, we have a lot of things going on in this complex we're very proud of and excited about the future of it. And so, we challenged our architects to bring us something beyond just a hole in the ground with a black chain link fence around it. And, and I'm just being frank, that's just, that's, we didn't want, we have that plan, by the way, we call that option 1. And, and that is the, that is the minimal plan. And then we asked them, you know, if we wanted to do something different, what were the possibilities? And so, I just want to sort of preview the, this option. We have had a conversation with Commissioner Cagle and the county, Precinct 4. They have a community collaboration grant, a large one, and they believe that this project fits inside of it to be a partnership with them, sort of like we partnered on the Timber Forest Bridge with Precinct 1 and 2, I think were the two that we did that on. So, a similar collaboration there. We've also talked with the City of Umbel about any, any possibility of a collaboration because the vision for this particular detention pond would be a couple of different things. One, it would have a walking path all the way around it so that the community would be welcome and could use it as a park-like space. And in addition to that, there, we would be able to, on game night, you know, we have a Turner Stadium and it's not exactly the same as a home stadium in some places. So, one of the things that we talked about is if it's a Kingwood High School home game that we light the fountains blue and we shine a light on a Mustang, and if it's an Atascida home game, we light the fountains red and we, and we shine a light on an eagle, Umbel High School purple, Kingwood Park green, Summer Creek maroon, I guess. I don't know if it's going to be gold, but nonetheless, the idea would be that we would be able to brand the visitor's side and entrance, this, and the whole area on Will Clayton Parkway for that evening to make the stadium more branded to the home team and give that sort of sense that you have when you are playing at home. So, that's, that's part of the, the look and feel that you're seeing here where PBK Architects has put the, the various mascots in this sort of area here. We have a, a marquee on Will Clayton right now. This would take place of that, so you see a little marquee there, you see the walk path around. Then Commissioner Cagle was excited because there's a couple of different projects that are near and dear to his heart when he does sort of park-like spaces. One is dragonfly habitats, and so we have that mocked up here. He's, his team actually has dragonfly experts. I'm way beyond my knowledge of dragonflies on this, but he has a team that knows all about dragonflies and they create habitats because it's a good thing for the ecology, et cetera. So, that's one areas. The other thing that he's excited about is his legacy tree program. And I'm not going to get this quite right, but he has living parts of famous trees from all across Texas. And he then plants them with, with plaques that describe that this is part of this famous tree at UT or whatever the case is, and his team likes to do that. And he's really a huge proponent of parks and green space and beautifying the community and making things that multiple government entities come together in partnership, maximizing taxpayer dollars to provide something for the community that they wouldn't otherwise have. So, certainly, this provides an opportunity for the community that a plain detention pond with a black chain link fence just, just doesn't do. And so, that's why we have, we've met with them to talk about the possibilities. So, we wanted to bring you back these slides tonight for a board discussion about the concept and see if there's interest in moving forward with this or if the interest is to return to the baseline detention pond that we do have, of course, in the original plans because it's required for flood control and for all of our county permitting, et cetera, to, to meet the codes and requirements. So, I think we have, do we have a couple more slides? I'm not sure. Let's see. Yeah, these are just the renderings that we've shown before. Okay. So, you can go, yeah, there we go, back to the dragonflies and the legacy trees and... Anyway, it's a, it's a partnership opportunity and something that would be nice on Will Clayton Parkway for the City of Umbel as well as the school district.
Okay. Who wants to start here?
Yeah, so, so a couple of things that Dr. Fagan didn't mention is the opportunity for outdoor learning space, the opportunity to expand our CTE programs with this space. We've talked about everything from fish hatcheries to water safety and everything in between. So, there's, there's more than just a, a corner drainage. You know, right now, it is a, it is, has the potential of being a big mud hole. And it is a focal point of Umbel ISD and a focal point of the City of Umbel and Harris County. And by pulling all these entities together and creating something that we can all be proud of, that the community, community can use, school district can use, I think it is, it is a great idea and PBK has really captured what we were looking for.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Mr. Scarfo?
Can you, Dr. Fagan, can you remind me of what the estimated cost was for this? It was in the $2 million range or...
So, the, the basic one is about, Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the basic one is about $1 million, right? So, that's what we have to do no matter what.
Right.
The, the slightly upgraded one that really no one likes because the, you know, it's $2 million, then this one is around about $3 million.
Okay. And, and what about, have they done any estimate, estimating of a cost to maintain? Because I mean, you look at the pictures, oh, that looks really nice and, and, but I do have to say, the, the renderings are a little bit deceiving of how the area looks and what you can change in that, that corner. But have they given any estimates of how much it'll cost annually to maintain this, I'm going to call it a facility because it almost becomes that.
Owen's getting up because he must have more information on this than I do.
I do. Mr. Scarfo, we have looked at that cost pricing. It depends on what we decide to do there. Not only are we talking about the possible dragonfly garden, we've talked about possibly offering some fishing in that pond as well, which would cause more of a maintenance concern for us, but is in the budget, we could, something we could take care of.
Okay, how, how much?
It does cost more. It's, it's about $5,000 a year to maintain if we were to do. Now, let's remember if, if I do the fishing there, we already maintain the ponds. Whether we do this or not, we have to maintain that area.
Okay. So, you're saying that to have it look this pretty, I'll use that word because it certainly is pretty, it's only going to cost incrementally about $5,000 a year.
When we had that fishing pond there, we would maintain this site anyway. We're going to have, we would have a sidewalk already on there. We, what you're looking at, what we would lose is the depth of the pond, the maintenance of that pond in terms of having the water fountains there. We would lose those because it would just be, you've driven around many of our campuses and seen the ponds we have now, basically what we do is mow those. We would have that same thing. If we put these water sprinklers and sprayers in there, we'd have the maintenance of those.
And that's included in that $5,000 number you're...
That was if the fishing, if the more we expand that pond, the more maintenance we'd have.
Well, I'm saying, like, with the fountains and the lights and all that stuff and...
It'd be about $10,000.
$10,000 a year?
Annually.
Incremental?
Mm-hmm.
Over and above, what do you have to pay because you do have...
That is correct.
...the property.
Yes, sir.
I get that part.
Yes.
Okay, I, how much is, how much is Commissioner Cagle, well, they kick in there.
Well, I, so when we went and met with him and talked with him, we, we said that what we'd like to have from him is about $1 million and he was, he was open to that.
Million dollars, okay, so now we're kind of getting back down to 2 million.
Exactly, and we have to pay a million no matter what. I mean, that's, yeah, that's the base.
Okay.
So, then you, you also look at, you look at Lakeland Elementary, you know, we're, we're hopefully looking at a sale of that property at some point in time, which could go for this as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey.
So, all, all I really need to say here is that I would be extremely disappointed if we had a hole, a hole in the ground with a black fence. We have those at other facilities and they look awful. And I think that would do a tremendous disservice to this community if we did that here because this detention area is significantly bigger than the other ones that we've had to put in. And I, I think that, that that would show just sort of a lack of care and partnership with, with this part of our community and that's something that we definitely do not want to do. So, this is, this will beautify, help beautify this area. It will give some recreation space to an area that needs it. And so, I would be in favor of not going with option 1.
Mrs. Morrison?
I tend to agree with Ms. Toomey. This is a great opportunity for us to open up learning spaces outside. We have built a complex and this complex needs to be outstanding. And the community, as we have seen, every time we've built something, anything close to this, the, the community opened up to Lakeland hugely. I think it would be a disaster if we didn't do it. They, we deserve it. The kids deserve it. They deserve to be able to utilize it. And every open space we have gives us, gives us another chance to learn.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Scarfo?
I'd just say, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying with the building and planning committee is presenting and Dr. Fagan, I get that, but we, again, as I mentioned earlier in my comment, we have limited resources. And while it would be really nice, I, I'm just not convinced at this point that we plunked down that much more money. I mean, you could do better than a, a black changeling fence. It could be a little more presentable than that, but I don't know if you go there. I'm just not sold yet that this is how we should spend limited dollars. And because no matter what, it's not like we're using Lotto winnings to do it, we're using taxpayer dollars and we're ready to go to the taxpayers next May to say, hey, we want you to continue, even though the rate won't go up, somebody can argue that, well, you know, if, if you didn't increase the amount outstanding, you could actually lower that rate. But I think we can make, make the case for why we need to have whatever that bond proposal is going to be. But I just think you, you have to also show that you're very judicious about what you choose to do. And I'm not saying I would never be convinced to do this, I'm just saying right now at this point in time, I'm, I'm not there. And, and that's okay. I'm just one, one voice and I just, you know, just being open and honest with you guys. And I, I know you put a lot of time and effort into it for the building, planning, planning committee. PBK did a great job. It looks awesome. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I mean, one thing I would like to say, as a member of building and planning, for me, the connection to the community is very important. And when I talk to parents who, or people that live around the areas where we have large detention ponds, they don't like the way it looks. I mean, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to show that we can do it right, but it's, but when you take taxpayer dollars, okay, well, we've done to. And, you know, they're not very appealing. I mean, wouldn't it be nice if you could walk around the one at Atascida High School at night and it had lighting? So, now it kind of draws the community into Atascida High School. I mean, hopefully, the idea of partnering with Generation Park will happen for the one at Summer Creek, but I think those things are important. And then when we talk about the $10,000 a year, I mean, for me as a parent, with having the dragonfly habitat, if that happens, or a fish hatchery, those are educational items. So, I don't really think the additional cost, in my opinion, opinion for me, is, is something that I would have great concern because it is educational. And then we're looking at $1 million anyway for a hole. I mean, so I understand your, your concern and I think we will continue to discuss it in building and planning to, to figure this out. But, but I, personally, I think it's a great idea and I think it's nice to be able to partner with the community and bring something great to a very busy corner that's appealing. Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, so I had Mr. Correa look at what it would cost to upgrade, for instance, the Atascida ponds. And do you remember what the cost was to change out the fencing and add walking trails around that?
It was about $175,000.
Okay. So, just, just to retrofit that, and again, when we're looking at this one, we were going to have to spend $1 million basically for the drainage program. So, that was going to be spent regardless. If Commissioner Cagle, which we have no reason to doubt his intentions, that's another million dollars. If we're able to sell Lakeland Elementary, and I'm, I'm just spitballing here, if we're able to sell Lakeland Elementary and utilize those dollars because that is a facility that we're not going to use anymore, then we're not utilizing any more, any money from the bond, bond program. We're utilizing money that's already available. We're utilizing partnerships with other entities similar to what we did at Summer Creek with General... with Generation Park and how they're maintaining some of those ponds and upgrading the walking trails around that. So, you know, this is, this is more centrally located. It's more of a high profile area. And that's why I think we need to do this one right.
Has the city of Umla been approached or have they?
Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah. Has the city of Umla been approached or are they willing to be partners in this thing in putting up dollars too? I mean, it obviously would be a good thing for the city.
For them, absolutely. Yeah, well, they're very interested. They, they want to partner with us in a lot of different ways. So it's just about figuring all that out.
Mrs. Toomey?
Sorry, real quick, you just sat down, Nolan. And, and I keep, I, and you may not have an answer to this question. I, I should have asked it in building and planning. But what is the, the distance? So as a walking trail, do you know what the distance around this pond would be?
I do not know that. I, I'd be lying if I said that. It's approximately approaching four acres worth of pond and about 90 million gallons of water.
Okay, so that actually is a significant, I'm trying to sort of compare it. You know, I lived in Summerwood for, for many years. I'm trying to compare it to the size of like the Summerwood Pond.
Oh, it's.
There. And it seems larger than.
Much larger.
And so that pond there in Summerwood gets tremendous community use. I mean, just me, when I lived there, I was out there every single day walking around that pond. And from what I know of, of this particular community, they do not have an asset like that.
No.
Available to them.
And everything we're doing is to bring the community out. That sidewalk is wider, about eight feet wide, so that you can run, bike, hike, just walk around it. It will go around the, it will go around the pond. It actually will go around three sides of the entire complex. And hopefully when we finish the backside, which is an alleyway, and turn that into a permanent road to increase mobility on that complex, that we'll put a sidewalk on it and you can actually go around the entire complex. Hope to bring our cross-country team out there.
I was going to say that might be an opportunity for our cross-country team because again, the, the location is not always conducive for the cross-country team to get the practicing that they need. So this is yet another opportunity for use.
Mrs. Parker?
I just wanted to say that that complex is so beautiful that having something of this caliber would match the things that are already there. And if we can afford it, I most certainly would be supportive of it.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mrs. Morrison?
One of the things that I know in building and planning that had been discussed, and I'm sure it's been discussed again, is this is a great opportunity to bring in our elementary students to connect to their high school students and to Quest. And when you can bring those in at a very short distance, this is a golden opportunity. So I just wanted to add that.
And I would say even outside of location, even though it's in the city of Umla, it, it's for, it's going to represent all of our high schools. And so everyone plays there. That is, that's our, our spot for the district. So I do like the idea of even tying in all of the high schools. I believe, you know, parents, no matter where they live, when they're coming into a game, I think they would appreciate that they're not just passing by a four acre hole of water that's moaned with a little fence. I think it, it will be impressive. I think they will appreciate it. So if there is no other discussion, I guess we can move on. Anything else? Okay.
We might need to do a search.
No, no. So our next item is 7D, Umla ISD COVID-19 mitigation measures. I actually would like to start with Dr. Fagan because although we're not voting on anything related to COVID this evening, I did ask Dr. Fagan to include this as an information item to explain kind of where we are, what we have in place, and also to explain how our dashboard actually works. I hear from a lot of parents asking, how do we go from one number to another in a day? And so there's a really good explanation of why that happens and how it happens. So just wanted to give her an opportunity and then we can all chime in if we so choose. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. So this has been a topic that we have been embroiled in since the very beginning of the year and one that we revisit a lot because this is a pandemic that changes all the time. And I think it's important to realize that the circumstances of last year are not the circumstances of this year in a lot of different ways. Certainly Alpha and we, and by the way, I did really appreciate the meeting with Umla Parents Care and that we did look at some data regarding the, the pervasiveness of various variants with children. And there was Alpha and it did infect some students. But by and large, Alpha was not really transmissible among children. We just didn't see that. We did not mask our elementary students. We were in alignment with the then governor's order that said we would need to mask everyone 10 and older, which did include our fifth graders and up, but K through, pre-K through four were not masked. And we didn't see a concern with that. And we certainly monitored that very closely because it was just all new. And that's one of the things that I think is really important for us to all remember is that this continues to be all new because it continues to change. Last year was a year where there were no vaccines available. Last year was a year where we didn't know and the medical community didn't know as much about treatment options and the way that they were going to manage this. Now with the, with the onslaught of Delta, which has really taken over, you know, and, and another thing that we talked about with Umla Parents Care is the fact that, you know, these variants come from all over the world and the vast majority of the world has not had a single vaccine and, and won't for quite a while. We've heard that from the World Health Organization. So I don't think I'm, I'm saying anything anybody doesn't know that the vast majority doesn't. And the, so the variants are going to continue to pop up throughout the, the globe. And Houston is a very international city. It's one of the things we love about it. And because of that, we are going to continue to see. So we have to have that big picture in mind as we, we continue to navigate this ever-changing set of circumstances. So my team and I evaluate constantly what are the right things to balance the mental health needs of children, to make sure that health decisions and health information that only parents and their physicians have are the, the prominent feature in the decision-making around what is best for my child. And, and to that end, then our role is to make sure that we respond with available options. So what we've done is make sure that even when not funded, despite the great work of our advocacy committee, at the end of the session, virtual learning was not funded. And Mr. Beatty put $11 million number in there, knowing that we were going to offer virtual and that we may not be funded for those students. And that was okay with us because for some families, they understand that a mask may not be a guarantee and they have to have a guarantee. And the only guarantee is virtual learning. That's the way that, that we see it from our team. So we wanted to make sure that no matter what, that was an option. And not only did we want to offer virtual learning, but we wanted it to be version 2.0. We learned a lot the last year about what's good about virtual and what needed to improve. We did not want to overburden our teachers with in-person and virtual students at the same time. So we did master scheduling that eliminates that to the greatest extent possible. We didn't want to eliminate electives for our virtual students. So we do have one-off circumstances where a teacher has a virtual student so that that child can continue with welding because that's their passion and that's what they want to do with their life. And we don't want to say, oh, I'm sorry, you're virtual, you can't weld. So we've continued with those opportunities in partnership with those teachers. We've added virtual stipends for teachers that are in that circumstance because we recognize it's double the amount of work to have to plan virtual and planned in-person. So we want to make sure we're compensating our teachers well. We've added professional development to make sure that they really understand the very best ways to teach virtually. We've improved our software. We've improved it, improved the, the Chromebook distribution for our students. And I just feel like in overall, we've really figured out what 2.0 looks like. Rusty Odom and many of our teachers have worked together. North Belt Elementary has been part of this, where we've talked about what are the facilities a teacher needs to be a truly great virtual teacher? It's not a classroom with 25 desks. I mean, that just doesn't make sense, right? It looks different than that. It's Mr. Wizard's World, it's Sesame Street, it's these kind of things. And so, you know, I see Christina's here, so she made me think, you know, they've been working together with teachers to design virtual learning studios for teachers that then Nolan has worked with PBK on the fly. You know, we had North Belt all designed because it's, it's a repeat of Lakeland and of Autumn Creek, right? But on the fly, Rusty's doing this work with Christina. They integrate those virtual learning opportunity centers for teachers into the new North Belt design so that we can continue to improve the kind and quality of virtual instruction available. Why? Because the, the coronavirus is never just going to go away. We know that. And that's going to need to be an option for children. And we want to provide our teachers with all the assets they need to be successful and offer something that's truly great. So this is the way we've approached it is, this is an ever-changing situation. We don't know that much about it. It really is fairly new scientifically speaking, right? So it's constantly being updated and changed, the information, TEA updates their stuff. We get new governmental mandates. There's a lot of misinformation about governor's orders. You know, it's an unfortunate circumstance that some school districts are currently being sued for having mask mandates because it's against the law. And so last year we followed the law and we did, we did a mask mandate because that was the governor's order. This year, we're not doing one because that is the governor's order. And we are going to continue to follow what we believe to be the legal requirements of, of the state of Texas. That's, that's our, I mean, we're, we're required to do that. So a couple of other things I just wanted to mention. We do do COVID testing for our staff members. It is free. It is PCR testing. We have set that up. We pay for it. We want to make sure that people who are positive are not on campus. We do want to make sure people who have symptoms are not on campus. And I'll tell you, our nurses and our teachers are very, they're on top of this, right? They're sending students down to the nurse's office who they see sniffling or this or that or the other all the time because we don't want symptomatic folks on campus. Absolutely, that is a priority. But from the beginning of time, parents have sent children who have the sniffles or whatever with some Motrin to school. And, and maybe they should, maybe they shouldn't. But what our goal is now is not to, to say to parents, you know, this is your fault or whatever. It's instead to take the other approach. How do we incentivize and make it so easy for parents to keep their children home that the, it's, that they do? Or how do we make it so easy for staff members so that they stay home if they need to? So we pay for COVID leave for our staff. We started out the year doing a matching program. We've changed that to 100%. We're paying 100% of the COVID leave for staff, paying for 100% of the testing. We are making it incredibly flexible for students who have to stay home. We were hoping to prop up tutors for all students in quarantine who are well enough to do work and these kind of things. The reality though, everybody has to understand is that we need those teachers teaching. We need them substitutes in the classroom. We need those, we're propping up new virtual sections so that we can accommodate waitlists. I asked Terry for the waitlist numbers a little bit ago and, and I'll let him. If, if you want to go to the podium and just kind of go over that really quickly. We, we are constantly churning through the waitlist and bringing students. I get emails from parents who say, you know, never mind, my, my child doesn't want to go virtual. And we make that change too. So virtual is a real option. We do work our way through the waitlist. We do make special exceptions for extenuating circumstances for parents who say, no, it's got to be right now. We're, we're really working with everyone in a personalized way to make sure that they have their needs met. So do you want to talk about waitlist for a second?
Yes, ma'am. The, so our waitlist, if a, if a parent goes to the, the Umla ISD link and chooses the link and fills the form out, then that puts them on a waitlist. And, and all three levels, elementary school, middle school, high school, have been working through those waitlists since the beginning of school. There are, there are some operational things that have to occur that do affect the campuses and eventually teachers when we move kids back and forth from virtual to face-to-face learning. And so at our elementary right now, we have hired, I think, six teachers virtually. So we have found six very qualified teachers that are now teaching virtually in elementary. So we have about 60 kids on the waitlist for elementary right now, but we have really taken care of everyone up through, I think, August the 31st. So those that are even from the start of school that have applied, that have applied to the waitlist currently, there are 60 on the waitlist at elementary honestly right now because we're still looking for some additional teachers. We still have an open posting on our job site. So if anybody who's listening tonight is a certified teacher, if you could please go to the link and apply to us, we're checking that on a daily basis for additional teachers. And they're doing interviewing when possible to find additional teachers. And we just, we have so many kids that are face-to-face right now. It's very difficult to collapse a face-to-face section to create a virtual teacher because we still have face-to-face kids there that are in our buildings. And so those are some of the things that we're at the elementary school level that we're looking at. As we find additional teachers, we stand up additional third grade classrooms and that takes those students off of that waitlist from the elementary level. Middle school level, we're, we have taken care of all the requests up to about September the 10th is where we're at with middle schools. And there's only 13 students right now on the waitlist for middle schools. And with the secondary level right now, middle schools and high schools, we have taken a momentary pause because as some of you know, the end of the grading period for the sixth week is coming up on Friday. And so moving students around right there before the end of the grading period causes additional operational things to have to take place for teachers and our campuses. So we have, we, we put pauses in place around those grading periods for trailing grades and things like that. So that's where we're at the middle school level as soon as, and high school. As, as soon as this week ends, we'll pick right back up with taking care of those requests that are, that are in the queue for middle school as well. For high school, we're sitting in about the mid to low 70s as far as a waitlist right now for high schools. They are about to August the 31st. We had to take a little bit more of a pause there to take care of some of our larger face-to-face class sizes on some of our campuses that have, that have increased enrollment above the projections this year, this year for us. And so we did take some of our virtual sections that were on our virtual master schedule and move those back face-to-face to take care of some of the, the content areas that had higher class sizes face-to-face. So we did some maneuvering there with leveling classes and doing some of those things. And so we took a momentary pause there, that's why. But again, next week we'll pick back up. And at the high school level, we do anticipate taking care of almost all of those, approximately 70 that are on the waitlist right now for our high schools.
Thank you. So just wanted to clear up the virtuals of Mr. Sutton. Did you want to?
How many students do we currently have virtual?
1,800. And, and you may recall that we, we ended the year last year with 2,400 who had selected it. But many of those came back to campus, which we had to make those, those all, we made all those changes. Go ahead.
Just to give you percentages, we, we tried to plan it at, this time, I'd say in the spring and through the summer of last year, we're about 6% that had requested virtual. By the time we got to the first day of school, we were down to three and a half and we're sitting at about right now, 3% that have, that have requested virtual.
So I think that's important to see the ebb and flow and the, the campuses have been incredibly responsive to, to scheduling and changing and finding teachers and sharing teachers. And I'm, I'm just, I got to tell you, I'm so proud of the system-wide effort to say, oh, Mr. McDonald, you need that math teacher back? Okay, we understand you're way over projection. We'll take that over here at, at another campus. We can handle that. So it's been, it really has been a family budget approach. The other thing is Nolan, there's a lot of misinformation about portables not having the same air quality and this and that and the other. Do you want to add anything about that? I just think it's a good opportunity to clear up that, that piece of information.
Yes, we made sure that when we did our work through the summer, putting bipolar ionization across the district, we also took care of portable buildings, all the way up to even the portable, temporary portable building we have at Umla High for the administration and the one for the nurse also have bipolar ionization. So we take care of that air quality across the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Roger's been working and I've been working through the region four superintendents with the county. It would really help us if they had a more, a closer site for parents to get COVID testing. That is one of the functions that they offer, but it's kind of far away. And so parents don't know about it. They don't know how to navigate it. So many superintendents have shared this back. We had a call last week, I think it was, where we talked with them about, you know, we, we really depend on you to do the contact tracing, to do the COVID testing and to vaccination clinics and we'll partner with you. But really this is, this is, you know, public health work. And we're really trying to focus on educational work because we're super busy doing that. And so they were receptive to adding more testing sites for parents. And so I'm hopeful to see that come to fruition. I, I don't know. I mean, we're, we're, Dr. Brown continually talks with them. Do you want to add anything about your conversations with the county about vaccination clinics and/or testing sites, contact tracing, all of that stuff?
Yeah, so actually I just had a call from Harris County when we had been working with them. At first they were a little hesitant because of the, they just didn't see the numbers here that re, that required the kind of testing that they do. However, I got a call Friday from the county, from Jennifer Ciger. And she said, hey, I understand you may be interested in us partnering on a testing site. And so we talked through that and so I expect to hear back from her shortly. And hopefully the county will be willing to open up a site here locally. So we're excited about that. Glad they reached back out.
Yeah, so we, so we work on these topics all the time and it just sometimes things don't happen as quickly as we would like. But certainly that would be a great benefit to our community in our area to have testing vaccinations and, and more robust contact tracing. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, UMBL Parents Care and UMBL ISD, we all want schools open. We saw the mental health impact of not having access to schools and, and all of the things that kids look forward to at school. We know this is a really important part of their life. It's something they can't get back. And so we are committed to doing that. And to that end, tonight, the board approved, thank you for this, by the way, a $40 increase for our substitutes. Rick Gardner and his team worked very diligently to monitor our sub-vill rates because we know that's an additional burden on our staff. And to keep our campuses opening and vibrant and great, we have to be staffed. And so tonight, the board approved. And so if you want to be a substitute, back to the public service announcements, if you'd like to be a substitute, we'd love to have you. And if you serve for multiple days and do all kinds of things, you can be just short of $200 a day at, at the end of the day. So Billy Beatty and Rick Gardner are working on that. We've also added additional pay for our custodians, food service workers and transportation folks. So thank you to the board for approving that. Also, these are all things we're doing to support our campuses and make sure that our teachers are teaching and our principals are principaling and they're not having to worry about who's going to dump the trash or who's going to serve the food. And by the way, Jerry Mon Barron has done a fabulous job, fabulous job with, it is worthy of applause. We asked her for 75 volunteers for food service, right? And she brought us 200. And not only did she bring us 200 food service volunteers, but they love it. They, they love it. They're all about, you know, serving the broccoli and the sushi and all the stuff that, that Nolan's team now serves and offers our kids. And now all we have to do is train the kids how to, how to choose, right, Trey? Trey's, Trey was out there serving broccoli and lettuce and stuff. And he said they just need a little faster in their choices. But thank you, Jerry, for 200 food service volunteers. That's fantastic. So in any case, thank you, board, for additional positions to keep our schools open and support our principals and our teachers and attract the very best here. That is what makes us great. And the last thing I want to talk about is the COVID dashboard. Ms. Dixon mentioned earlier, there is somewhat of a, sometimes a misunderstanding about the COVID dashboard. And, and Jamie Mountain, her team, you see this as like a team effort, right? Because I call on all these different people for all these different things. And that's truly what it is. Jamie Mountain, her team do a fantastic job. They handle all of the classroom notifications for the entire district to take that off the plates of our leaders. She had to staff up because TEA decided the day before school started, we're going to do it differently. And she's done that. And Andrew maintains the COVID dashboard. And the, the deal is this, we track the cumulative cases from the very first day of the year, right? August 10th. We're one of the first to come back to school. So that's a really important point because some districts didn't, didn't come back for weeks later. And so of course their numbers are going to be lower. I mean, that's just the way it is. And so we track that graph on the left. Maybe we can pull it up, Jonathan, I'm not sure. But on the left, you see the total, the cumulative cases for the entire year. And then on the right, you see the current and active cases. And this is where people get like confused because they're like, wait a minute, yesterday that said 50. Now it says, you know, 40. And how can that be possible? Because I know there were more cases. Well, the reason that's possible is because that graph is active cases only, meaning it's a 10-day, it's a 10-day window. And then they drop off. They stay on the other graph, but they drop off of the active cases graph. So yes, the numbers do fluctuate. At the beginning of the year, we were having enrollment surges, which is great, by the way. We love that everybody wants their children with us. We think we're the best too, so we understand. And we had these enrollment surges. So Jamie was always having to fix the percentages, right? Because now we're at 47,000 students. Now we're at 48,000. On and on we go. And the reason the number says 46 or whatever is because she backs out the virtual students just for clarity. Because our enrollment is close to 48,000, but it says 46 because we backed the virtual students out. So Andrew's telling me I'm right. So you can see that on the right is our active case counts. And you can see that they're pretty low. We're at 0.4% of students and 0.6 at staff, and we're very happy about that. You do see the cumulative cases on the left, and you just have to remember that that staff case is since August 2nd. And then the student ones from August 10th. So goes back that far. And other districts aren't tracking back that far because they weren't in service. So then if you slide down to the bottom, one other thing we added is a little bit of clarity here because I think that you see those bar graphs at the top and they can be a little deceiving. You see a great big blue bar and you think, wow, that's the majority of the, of the campus. But we thought it was important to show what the overall looks like against 100%, right? Because the top graphs would be way too big for us to have a Tassita's bar, you know, huge. And then little tiny, you know, elementary school would just not work out very well visually. So we added to the bottom so that you can see the percent of staff and students over time, every single day that were, that were positive. And you can see the trend lines. That's what we want to know. We want to know, are we trending up? Are we plateauing? We look at the individual district or the individual campus data also. So Lucy Schultz works with an elementary school who's seeing like, hmm, that's odd. We're seeing a few extras. Or Donnie works with a middle school or Trey works with a high school, and they make adjustments. So a lot of the things people said like, well, we shouldn't be doing this and we shouldn't be doing that. Or we should be thinking about keeping kids in little pockets or, you know, all those things that we tried last year. We look at those when it's necessary. When we see an issue, we respond to it instead of using a one-size-fits-all approach. Because we have almost 50 schools and we have almost 48,000 students. And so we're really trying to be personalized and targeted in our approach so that we're not overreacting somewhere where there's no issue or underreacting somewhere where there is. And that's really how we're managing it with all of those kind of one-off options. So if we saw a pep rally and then a surge, then Trey would see that differently going forward. We haven't seen that. So we want to maintain those opportunities for kids. We believe it's important that you have the opportunity to do those things and they're a choice. That's the other thing that I think is really important to, to mention is that those, those pep rally kind of things, they're a choice. If any student comes to Wes Solomon and says, I'm really not comfortable going in the gym with all of those other students. He's like, absolutely, totally fine. We will make other arrangements, not a problem whatsoever. So our principals and our teachers, they are doing incredibly difficult, complicated work. And they are doing, they are knocking it out of the park in every way. They're covering for each other. They're meeting the needs of kids. They're dealing with quarantines. They're dealing with absences. They're flexible in their makeup work, all this stuff. And so I couldn't be prouder of the staff. I think you're doing phenomenal job. Thank you to everybody. If there's more that we can do to support you, please do let us know. We're, we're absolutely on board to do it. The principals were really excited about the idea of additional pay for those, those areas of substitutes, transportation, custodial and food service. And so, you know, we did that. The board approved it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow.
I try to be fast, but you know, I know we, we live this every day, you know? And, and so we're constantly going through the information and making adjustments.
But thank you very much. So I guess we can just, you know, I'm sure most of the board members have something that they would like to ask or share. So Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, I had some other notes here, but Dr. Fagan, that was fantastic. So I don't have a lot of extra questions that, but one thing, we hear a lot about data, about total case counts, periods of time and so forth. Remind me, last year, if I remember correctly, we only had like 62 to 65% of our student body in person.
Correct. When we started the year, we were about, we were about 65, 35. So that's about right.
And right now we're at like 97, 3.
That's right.
Okay, all right, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Ms. Parker?
Well, I just thought today, I've been pulling this information for the past, since school started, since, since the 10th of August. And so today I pulled the COVID dashboards of every district that touches us. So if the, if I pulled the ISDs that border us. And so just for comparison, so UMBL ISD, our student COVID positivity today is 0.40%. And our staff is 0.60. So, so students less than half of 1%. So Aldine, and Aldine didn't go back to school until a week after us. Aldine's positivity rate today is 0.39% student, 0.39% staff. Conroe is 0.70% student, 1% staff. Crosby, 0.38% student, 0.90% staff. Houston ISD, which North Forest used to border us and, and we took, Houston took over North Forest. And so HISD is 0.48% student, 0.48% staff. Huffman, it looks like their numbers are up a little bit. It looks like they're about 3%. But their, their number was student and staff. They didn't break it out, students and staff. And then New Caney, they, they grouped together, students and staff, and they're at 0.6, 0.69%. And then Sheldon is 0.40% student, 0.70% staff. So we're pretty much, I mean, either less or in alignment with all of the districts around us. There's no anomaly in, in our cases versus those districts that touch us as we sit here today. And the other thing I wanted to talk about, and it's not just in UMBL, but people who have COVID, spread COVID. So if you are sick, please stay home. If your child is symptomatic, please, please keep your child home. And what happened here in UMBL, and you can see on the COVID dashboard, if there were more cases, we spread more cases, right? But, but overall, like there might be one or two cases at one particular campus. I don't know if they need the same COVID protocols as a campus that has a lot of cases, right? And so, so those are just some things, those are some thoughts that, that I had. And I also wanted to share, I personally read every single email that I received. Our board policy is if you send an email to me, I will respond. And, and I did respond to every single email I received. If you send it to all of us, typically the board president responds or the superintendent. So, so if you're sending us an email that's carbon copied to everybody, we're not each going to respond to you. And I think that that's important information to get out there. It's not that we're not reading. We absolutely are reading every email that we get. And, and we're taking that, that information. And, and I know all of us up here, you know, either are a parent or a grandparent of children in the district. Many of us have, you know, parents that are a little older in the district. And we all deeply, deeply care. We deeply care. So any decision that's made, it's, it's not made out of a lack of caring or understanding or thought. We really are putting a lot of time into the decisions that are made. And I think Dr. Fagan and her team have done a great job. I, I would like to say that, that the decision to come back to school, the board, y'all voted in May. And in May, there, there were not that many. I mean, we were doing great. We went into the summer, everything was going great. And so, so we didn't go back with any protocols. And Dr. Fagan and her team, you guys have pivoted on a dime and worked so hard to, to make the school safe. And I just really want to thank you.
Before, let me jump in real quick on two points that you shared. One of the things, when you shared the numbers for all of the districts surrounding us, one thing I would like to, to point out is that some of those districts actually have mask mandates. So that's, it's interesting to see those numbers. So I'm glad you did that research and shared that with us today. And yes, I have the emails and I answer them on a received basis. So I still have a lot to get through, but I'm, but I've knocked out a whole lot. But working through it for sure. And I definitely will finish answering them all.
Yes, Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, just one point of clarification. So we didn't begin the year with no protocols. There were all the safety protocols as far as air circulation, cleanliness, water bottle fillers, et cetera. Everything, all the PPE stuff that Dr. Fagan talked about, those things were in place on day one. We didn't go in naked and hope and pray that nobody got COVID. Also, I don't believe anyone expected us to go COVID-free 100% the entire school year. So looking at the data also, it shows that 2,852 total cases since August 10th, correct? And so if we have 185 current active cases, could we assume that 2,667 of those cases, those students are, have passed the 10-day quarantine and are back in school?
Well, I mean, if a student gets COVID, then their care is between their family and their physician. So they could be out longer than 10 days. So, so I'd say that we move them off the active list when they're no longer in the 10-day period. But that doesn't mean they come back to school down the 11th day. Some, many do. In fact, a lot of parents that email me say, you know, my child doesn't really have that many symptoms. And so I just really want their homework, right? I mean, so that's what we're trying to do is make sure that they have access to the makeup work so that they can work on it while they're at home.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
And thank you for clarifying. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Scarf?
Thank you, Madam President. One thing I'll say, Dr. Fagan has repeated, has said this before, and I, she, I don't know how many times she'll have to repeat it over the course of this school year. But just because we do things differently on different, from one campus to another, that's not inconsistency, as she says. You know, we're, we're trying to, we don't want to do a one-size-fits-all because that's not a good plan, especially in this situation. So don't, please don't take it that way, that because we're doing something a little bit differently here as far as pep rallies go or this activity or whatever it is. But these guys are really looking hard at all of this stuff. And, and I, I agree. I mean, we, we have dogs in the hunt as well, as they say. One of my three grandchildren, elementary school grandchildren, he tested positive a week ago yesterday. Praise God, he's done very well and I think he's, he's out of the woods. But it's, it's scary. Nobody, we, we share that anxiety. We share the fear, for lack of a better word. But you can't be paralyzed by it either. You have to, you have to take steps. And I know there's lots of people who say, well, if you put a mandate, a mask mandate in and defy the governor, that'll take care of everything. Well, unfortunately, it, it would not. And then you have others say, oh, no, absolutely, it needs to be optional. And I, I think that we have to go with the law and that's where it is now. But one thing I, I will say, it's one thing to criticize and for people to send in emails or however they want to communicate and, you know, criticize our, our policy, actions we've taken. But it's the personal attacks that just are beyond the pale. And, and Dr. Fagan has had to suffer through quite a few of those that I've seen. And, and, and folks, you really need to stop that. And like I said, criticize what we do in terms of policy and decision-making. That's, that's great. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. They provide data. The, the HBC parent group, they've provided great data and it's, and it's good to see because it, it's, it's helpful to know that. I don't know, one of the things that was brought up, it was about quarantine, quarantining families. I don't believe we have the authority to, to say a family has to be quarantined if one of their. Personally, I think it's a good idea. I know that was done in the case of my grandson. The other guy didn't go to school either and hasn't yet. And I think people should do that. I hope they would do that. And it concerns me too that I, I guarantee that we're not getting all, all the reports of, of cases. I, I would hope people, again, caring about their community, that goes way beyond whether a mask or not, not a mask, but people doing what's right for their neighbors. And I use that in a broad sense. So I would hope people, people would, would do that and, and try to protect each other in, in those real meaningful ways. And, and I'll also even say about vaccines, why, I, while I don't think it would be correct to mandate people to be vaccine, to get a vaccination, I, I personally would recommend to folks that, hey, you know, I know there's risk involved, but I, I think, again, I'm a finance guy and I spend my professional life looking at probabilities of the different outcomes of things. And I think it's a good bet. And that's just me. And I know there's been some issues, but boy, when you look against the total universe of vaccinations, it's been pretty minimal. So I, I think it's a good thing. I, I'm, but I'm, again, you have the right not to do it. But those are some meaningful things that people can do to, to help our community, help their neighbors. And, and if you don't get it, I'm not saying that you don't care. All I'm saying is that's something that, that's, you can consider doing. And maybe you could rethink it, talk to your healthcare providers if you're on the fence or you're, you're afraid about it. But again, I, I just think that what these guys are doing and, and Mr. Perkins alluded, or just not alluded, I'm sorry. He, he talked about how difficult it's been to, for teacher positions, but it's also for nutrition, for custodial, for transportation. but it's also for nutrition, for custodial, for transportation. And it's not just us, it's across the state. And for a myriad of reasons that that exists. It's not just one thing that we're having, having those issues. So anyway, folks, I would just say, keep communications open and please understand, Mrs. Parker said and Mr. Sitten did as well, and I know other folks up here share the same thing. We care deeply about our students, about our staff, and decisions we make, you may not agree with, does not mean we don't feel that connection because we have it either as children, our children that we have in school or grandchildren we have in school. And that's, understand that, please understand that.
Yes, Mrs. Toomey?
So I sort of contemplated what I wanted to say and I kind of threw out what I originally was going to say, so I'm going to kind of talk off the cuff, which is a little dangerous. I appreciate what Mr. Scarfo just mentioned in terms of the tone of the conversation. I think that we could all have healthy disagreement, as I mentioned earlier today. And through that disagreement, sometimes we can reach compromise and agreement and make everything better. But when the tone is heightened to a point where it's just, it creates animosity, it does not foster an environment of working together to move forward. I personally have a very thick skin. I've spent 20 years as an attorney and you know what, if you want to call me names, then that's fine, you can call me names. You can, I received a postcard that claimed that I was an anti-vaxxer. Well, I mean, there actually, nothing could be further from the truth. I have an immunocompromised child who actually was one of the first people to receive the vaccine along with the rest of my family. And we receive all vaccines and I highly encourage vaccines. But what I really want to say with regards to this is that the tone that we take as parents and as community leaders impacts our students, it impacts their mental health, it impacts how they act. And we are seeing an increase in stress and an increase in discipline issues and bad behavior on the part of our students because those students are reflecting the tone that they get in the community and at home. So I would like to challenge each of us to, even in our disagreement, to adopt a respectful tone towards each other and maybe we can work through things. There have been emails that I have received and yes, I read every single email. I will say that emails that call me names, I don't tend to respond to, but I read them. And I care and I care, I care about, we don't do this job for the pay because we're volunteers. We don't do this job for the glory because I can guarantee you, everyone sitting up here does way more work behind the scenes where we get zero recognition and we actually like it that way. There's not people on this board that are out seeking public recognition. We do this because we care about our district. We've got people that have grown up in this district or lived in this district for, you know, 20, 25 years and we care. We didn't get, we didn't get elected because we want to destroy the district or because we have an ulterior motive that is bad. We volunteered our time because we care. So anyway, I have all these notes about statistics and protocols and everything. And I think I'm just going to throw them all out the window today because that's a conversation to have that, you know, that we'll have and that I can have one-on-one with Dr. Fagan. But I just want to leave everybody with the fact of, let's take a breath and let's work on respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. Mrs. Morrison?
I want to thank Ms. Toomey and Mr. Scarfo for their statements because, believe it or not, we do, we read every email. I have to say, the last two years have been very interesting. We have had a lot of names, a lot of names called, but we all sit up here, we all love children. Mr. Sitten grew up in this area. You can't ask for anything more powerful than a man who fights for this community. We all love these children and that's the reason why we sit here. I don't want to take anybody's rights away. I want our children to be able to go to school. They are mentally better off at school. Now, there are children who do not need to be in the buildings right now and I understand that. But I also understand that we need children to have connections. And no, we're not perfect. We'll never be able to satisfy everybody, but we do the very best with what we have. And we're very fortunate to have Dr. Elizabeth Fagan here and her staff. They work tirelessly, tirelessly to make sure it's the safest environment as possible. I know for a fact those principals do. I used to be one and it's not easy. It is not easy. But the one thing I know is, if you work together out of respect, you will get a compromise, you will get a successful situation. All I ask, all I ask is that you remember that, that you remember that we are here for the children in this district and to make sure they do have a safe place. But understand, we're all human and we're not perfect. But we want them to have the best situation possible. So their world will be better. And yes, COVID is not going away. I think my 70-some-odd years, I can honestly say the last three years have told me COVID's not going away. But I want our children to have the best possible situation possible. All I ask is that we all work together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Anyone else?
Okay, well, I guess I'll say my remarks. So first, I would like to just reiterate some of the things Dr. Fagan said, just to bullet point them. We were planning to offer virtual regardless of state funding. I mean, thankfully, we got it, but we were going to do that regardless because we want what's best for students. We have COVID testing for our staff. She said, we're sending sniffling students to the nurse. We're paying for COVID leave for our staff and paying for their testing. We do realize the waitlist numbers are there and we're working through that and trying to hire teachers. So that's a challenge. And like Dr. Fagan has said, that's a challenge across the state. We're in connection with a lot of different school districts constantly and it is a challenge everywhere. We have bipolar ionization in the portables and thank you, Nolan, for that because that was one of the questions that I had tonight. I truly appreciate the HPC parents that spoke tonight and their comments. It is appreciated more than you know because I do think when we're making decisions, it's a community effort. We're all in this together and we're living through a pandemic together. Definitely want to thank Dr. Fagan and her entire team. I mean, yes, I mean, we see what you do, we all work in committee, so we see the work a lot of times. We don't see all of the work, trust me. We see a little tiny piece and that piece is a lot. And so we see that the work you're doing and please know that we definitely recognize that. You know, I also wanted to say to keep in mind that all of the information for Umla ISD on our site and for all the other school districts is all self-reported. You know, so one of the things I wanted to mention is that, you know, in the media, we're compared to other school districts, but the data is only good as the self-reporting. And I think in Umla, we are very good at self-reporting and we still probably don't get everyone to self-report. But our parents are pretty vigilant about being responsible in that area. But you, it's challenging when I see things like that on the media when I know that some of the results that they're sharing are not factual in regards to comparing us to other districts. And then something, you know, that several people mentioned tonight, we have children in the district and grandchildren in the district. So we do have a vested interest in what happens. We do care. And actually, you know, without sharing everybody's business up here, but we've all been affected by COVID personally in some way with relatives or our own family members. And we definitely keep students, teachers and staff and their families, that's our most, it's the most important thing to us. It is priority number one, their safety. And the one thing that I really hate when I read the emails is when people say this is a political issue. I know everyone up here extremely well and for us, this is not a political issue. I mean, we take it very seriously. We have always put people first. We think about what's best for our students first. It's always our focus, it's always our number one priority. So, you know, talking about kindness and emails and how we speak to one another, I mean, honestly, I want to almost say, how dare you? I mean, because we truly put people first. That is all we really think about. We care and it's a passion for all of us. And I think someone said, Ms. Toomey, we do not get paid to do this. We do this for free because we want to, we want to serve our community. All of us up here have a servant heart. So I want to be sure that that is expressed. One thing, I think it was, let's see, Dr. Luna who spoke earlier, I would like to say, yes, we more than welcome masks. If someone wants to wear a mask, we are open to that and no one should be made to feel that it's not okay for them to wear a mask. No student should feel that way, no teacher should feel that way. So we definitely more than welcome masks in Umla ISD. But if you so choose with your family to make a different decision, we are open to that too. And the last thing that I really want to express, because it's when we're, when I'm answering emails, since I'm mostly, they're being answered by me, I just want everyone to understand that we are following the law. You know, some school districts who did not follow the law are being sued by the state. And we don't know how all that's going to play out, but like me, every single board member up here, we took an oath of office. And when we took that oath of office, it was to uphold the law. So even though there are lots of opinions, there's different medical people emailing us and we get all of that, but we are following the law. We followed the law last year and we will continue to follow the law this year. It's what we're charged to do. And I believe we also had our hand on the Bible when we took this oath and I for one take that seriously. So I just want to end with that. Again, Dr. Fagan, thank you for explaining everything to us tonight. And thanks for the concern in the district because, like I said, that we're all in this together and COVID is not going away. Mrs. Morrison, I think I'll end with that. It is not going away. And that is all I have. Okay, so let's move on to our last item, 7E, Financial Services Reports as a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Seeing none.
Yes, sir.
I just want, I didn't say this during my comments on our finance committee, but I just, again, thank Mr. Beatty and his whole group for all the information they put together for us and as they always do, such a thorough job. And I didn't mean to not say thank you, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. So moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Yes, Mr. Sitten?
Just real quick, I mean, take it for what it's worth, forever, never, never, we never had virtual comments in the public comment section. We brought that in when COVID shut everything down for safety reasons. Then during the summer, we stopped that for a period of time and now we brought it back. I think that if someone would like to address the board, they need to be here in the boardroom. We're taking our time through committees, through board meetings, through public appearances, et cetera. And I would like for us to consider removing the virtual option for public comment the way we've always done it.
So would you like to see that on the agenda in October for us to discuss?
We can put it on as a discussion item. It's not, it's not something that we have to vote on because it's not a requirement.
Okay.
So, but...
To get feedback from the board?
Yes.
We can add that as an agenda item for information? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, the time is now 9:44 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.